Right, I know she is. Hey, we're gonna get 1,500. Good, how are you? Been a while. It's been a little while.
Hey Ed, how you doing? Can I get in there?
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the West Goshen Township Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, February the 21st. If you would please stand at your own place.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as eternal.
Thank you. Please be aware this meeting is being livestreamed on the Township YouTube channel. Also, the meeting may be audio or video recorded by people present in the room. To start the meeting on the agenda, we have the opportunity for public comment. This is for anyone wanting to raise an issue that is not on the agenda tonight, or someone who has a question or a comment for the board of staff. There is an opportunity on each of the agenda items for public discussion. Okay, so comments, we'll move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is Discussion and Presentation Regarding An Application Before The Zoning Hearing Board For 1100 Ashbridge Road. Jamie, do you want to introduce the subject?
Sure. So, we have an application for a speaking of variance from Section 84-47A in order to have a deck located less than the 15 feet required by the zoning ordinance from the side property line at the property at 1100 Ashbridge Road. The applicant is here to, you know, talk a little bit more about the location of the deck and their property and answer any questions that you might have. They are scheduled before the zoning hearing board for Monday, February 27.
Very good. Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure, you can use the stand or we are okay sitting or...
Could you say your name and just ask for the record?
Sure, my name's Megan Hendel. I'm the resident owner of Ashbridge Road. And this is Michael Clark, he's my contractor. So, I actually started this process about a year ago and when I did the research, I was pretty certain that the setback was 10 feet. And based on that, we kind of went through the adventure of getting the permits drawn and going through the process, which has been quite long since I'm just here now. And when we submitted for the permit, that's when we discovered that the setback was actually 15 feet and not 10. And so, we requested the variance. The deck that we're looking to put is going to be on the right side of the property. So, I live on that corner of being Silk Pike and Ashbridge Road, which, as you can imagine, is pretty busy, especially with Graystone Hall now being open operational. There's a lot of traffic. And so, I wanted to put the deck basically off the dining room to have a quiet spot outside. So, the deck will be located on the right side, between my house and my neighbors, and also between that is working right light. So, there's a...I'm not sure if you have another slide in there that kind of shows the... Yeah, so, the trees have been taken down. I've actually done some improvements to the house with the exterior. So, all the tree work has been done, those trees have since been removed. And then, new roofing and siding have been done as well. So, it's kind of a lot of things of what I'd like to do with the home.
Okay, do you want to say anything, Mr. Clark?
Um, just for the setback being 15 feet, the deck that we had proposed was 12 feet coming off of the house, which only gave us roughly 11 feet 6 inches left for our setback off the deck. So, we were just asking for a few more feet in order to be able to fit that 12-foot deck in there and still be able to have it that size. If not, we were gonna have to go down to, I think, maybe Jamie at one point, like down to eight feet currently if we got that 15-foot setback. So, that's why we raised number 10, we would definitely be able to meet that requirement.
And I have a delivery from my neighbor as well, who owns the property next to me, so...
So, you discussed this particular variance with them?
Yes, she's well aware, yeah. She actually is out of town, returning to see things. I'm hoping that she can make it next Monday if not show the letter.
So, just as background, so this was presented by Jamie to the board as to what was coming up for the zoning hearing board at our last meeting. And the board discussed some concerns about how close this deck was going to be to that neighbor's property and, you know, the intention behind having these setbacks in the zoning ordinance, et cetera. Usually, if we have, you know, no fundamental objection, we'll just take a neutral position. The zoning hearing board will do their job. But we wanted to understand this with you a little bit, so might be coming tonight. So, let's also kick it off into the board way with their own thoughts. But is there an option to actually have maybe a smaller deck on the side and extend more of a, you know, a deck around just that back corner of the property?
Quite possibly. So, the intention with the deck that's gonna be right off the side of the house is it's gonna be a covered porch, so it's gonna be screened in. And, you know, for me, the thing I love about my house is the natural light. So, I didn't want painting off the back, one because it's noisy, really noisy back there.
That's the big spill pipe.
Correct, yeah.
There's a tree buffer that spill, isn't there?
No, so I've taken all those trees out. So, there's no trees any longer because they were all dead. So, I mean, basically, I have two trees in my front yard and no other trees on the property. And so, there is no sound barrier. And then, you know, I did have trees along that side before and they were taken down about a year or two ago. So, those used to hang all over my neighbor's driveway. So, I think she would much prefer the deck than the trees that were constantly dropping things.
Is there gonna be, is there a fence at the property line or not? As I said, part of the design, or is it just the deck will come out and your deck will be...
So, that fence that's there will remain. So, that currently goes across and then that's the back of the yard, the entire length of the property.
And that, that deck, that fence coming across the same?
Yeah.
Took on the whole of the house, is that?
Yeah, I mean, you know...
That fence looks like it's where the deck is gonna extend down past the edge.
Yeah, it'll extend past...
So, our fence will have to come out, right?
It'll be over it.
It'll be just over it. Basically, where you're in that picture there, you can see where the siding stops. That's basically where the deck will, the height of the deck would start.
Okay.
So, it'll just continue straight over the top of that.
Thank you for the explanation. So, Board Members, do you have any questions?
Well, yeah, I have a question. I mean, when you go before the zoning hearings board, in order for you to get the variance created, you understand you have to prove hardship.
Yeah, so I actually have an attorney that's gonna be joining me for that meeting to kind of go through things. And, you know, her approach was that we would not take the hardship, obviously, there is no hardship. So, she has another idea of how we'll present that next week in front of the zoning board hearing.
Well, that was my question, and if there is no hardship, I don't know what basis you would grant the variance. But just for your own consideration, understanding the history here, if you didn't understand that it was 15-foot setback, you thought it was a 10-foot and you built accordingly, couldn't you just make yourself resolve this and not go through, not just the trouble, but also the expense?
Well, the expense of the plans was ridiculous. And so, having to go back to get them redone is gonna be an extra cost. And, you know, to have the deck, you know, come from 12 feet to 18, it just seems like a big jump for me. So, you know, ideally, I would like to have that 12 feet width on the deck just because of the amount of money that's going into this project. I did have a question about the Graystone Hall property. And so, I can see all of those homes from my front yard. And do they have that same setback requirement there? Do they have a variance for that property?
Graystone is in a different zoning district.
They're not in West Goshen, or they're...
No, they're in West Goshen, they're just in a different zoning district.
So, they have different...
They would have different requirements. Each zoning district generally has its setback requirements.
Yeah, because they seem a lot closer than what I'm even asking.
Yeah, I'm certainly not telling you what you should do.
Right, no, I appreciate that.
You're looking at an 11 feet 8 inch wide deck coming off the side of the house.
Correct.
And to meet the 15-foot variance requirement, if you reduce that to just 8 foot 4 inches.
Right.
You're good.
Right, but that involves getting all new plans drawn up, which was thousands of dollars for the plans. And it was months and months of work. So, at this point, I'm just so far in.
So, you're saying that your neighbor is aware that you want to put this on the top of her?
Yes, yes.
So, yeah, from your plan, are you able to sort of delineate how the stormwater from the roof is gonna work? And if that's gonna impact their property? And does she, because she asked those questions?
She had to know.
She's not. I believe there was gonna be just two gutters, one coming off the back side, and that will be going into her yard and one coming off the front of the house. That one might be a little bit closer. That front corner might be a little closer to the property, but the way the whole property is pitched, that water that came out of the gutter is gonna run back towards her property. Because the neighbor, her house sits here and the neighbor's is a little kind of a little bent so where the gutter will come down, water's not really gonna run off towards that neighbor's house.
Yes, my question, is there any requirements for previous cover with all the trees that were removed? From an engineering standpoint?
Well, from an engineering standpoint, the deck project as presented would trigger a stormwater permanent. You have a stormwater design, you have a stormwater management plan for the project.
That's what I thought, is getting a, has a plan been developed yet?
I think we're still going.
Okay, so that would have to be incorporated into this also, especially with all the trees that were removed. It was all of that.
Yeah, they were. These are going to call it, so unfortunately, they have to come down.
Is there any deck, Jamie, if it's enclosed? Isn't it more like an addition if it's enclosed?
Well, it's just screened in. It just has a roof over it and then just screened.
Okay.
So, it's a 4, but it's kind of a, there's 12 feet by 20 feet would be enclosed and then 12 feet by 20 feet would be open.
The rest is just...
Yeah, and the backyard.
There is, what do you have in the rear of your, behind, in the rear of the house? Just as you have between the rear of the house and the rear of the property, is it like 30 feet or something?
Yeah, I have a very large...
So, you have plenty of room in the rear?
Yeah, but you're saying it's noisy.
It's very noisy and then you would be basically walking all the natural light from the bottom level of my home.
And if there are all the costs you're gonna incur, you heard already, you need the stormwater assessment, et cetera, so...
No, it's getting to be very expensive.
I was just trying to say that adjusting the size of the deck may be part of that.
If I, do you adjust the size of the deck down to 8 feet to storm, just stormwater management?
Depends on the overall size of your, of your deck and porch. The whole project size is what...
Is it the roof, is that what, it doesn't matter?
Deck is considered by... And you're right, you're right about the threshold of just over right now, based upon your application for zoning.
Okay, so if I...
If you trim it down, you might be able to get below. I don't know your permit history to know it.
Yeah, I mean, I have a real, the roofing permit, but that's...
Yeah, the project history for the property was back, I have to go back to 2013 to see what was done on the property.
Yeah.
See if anything qualifies. But if you, the cumulative effect starts at 500 square feet from 2013, new additions to the property. Right now, you're just over that. So, if you bring it under that and there's nothing done since 2013, you may not need a stormwater permit.
Got it. I mean, the design is there, the permits is better. Of course, you have to read the design, but it's not as extensive as it was to formulate the original plan.
Yeah, I don't know what the charge would be.
As much as it was to do the initial plan.
Yeah.
But you're just modifying a small thing with a renewed plan.
Your only variance you're asking is for the setback, right?
Correct, that's correct.
So, if you actually did not have that variance, you wouldn't have, actually, this lawyer's opinion could have happened.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, they push more money to go ahead with trying to get... I'm not trying to discourage, I'm just saying it's like too perused to just accept what the rules are now. You don't need an attorney, you may not need a stormwater. You know, you're wearing braces.
I think we've had a good discussion. Is there any questions unanswered from the board's perspective? So, at this point, then, is the board have any firm position one way or another? Or are you neutral on this application if it goes forward to the zoning hearing board?
Well, my feeling is that we have ordinances for a reason. We're trying to maintain a certain setbacks to maintain a certain quality of life within our community here. And just if you have the money to get the variance and you can clean around it, I don't see the point of our ordinances or this. I think we should, my feeling is to oppose it.
Okay, thank you, John.
I think there are ways where she can make some relatively minor adjustments to be able to define the limits.
Okay, other opinions from the board?
I think we should stay in control and move up to the zoning hearing board. I agree, I would like to stay in control, but that's just as well. As far as we have professionals on that.
Okay. I will take the same position, I will remain neutral. So, at this point, we have three board members who are neutral on this application. If you do proceed with it, the zoning hearing board, they will be the ones making the decision. If you decide on this to the board tonight, maybe an adjustment to the design would be the appropriate way to go. With some of the other issues that we raised, it would be your decision, so... Do we need a motion, or are you going to?
No, I'll please on.
Thank you. Next up is Agenda Item Number Five, Continued Discussion Regarding Proposals From HRG Inc. and Carol Engineering Corporation Regarding Professional Services For The Following Projects Outlining West Goshen Township's Pollution Reduction Plan. Two projects, a basin road stream restoration and the Government Services Center basin retrofit. Will you, Brian, can update his own status?
Yes. Good evening. So, tonight before you, in your packet is the October 26, 2022 proposal from HRG for the basin road stream restoration and a February 14, 2023 proposal as requested from Carol Engineering Corporation for a similar, for the same project. The proposals are slightly different. And Chris, I did outline to you in a memo from my review of what are differences. For the basin road, the big difference is HRG is proposing to do a hydraulic analysis, which is typically done for streams. Carol does not think it needed, they exclude that. HRG is going to be looking to get a stream restoration waiver from the DEP, where Carol is proposing to apply for two general permits. Those are the major differences. There's a slight difference in cost being, that's like, there's a difference in cost because of Carol not doing the study. For background, HRG did do the stream restoration project for the sewer authority at the sewer plant. So, do have experience in the township with the stream bank restoration project and have gotten the permit installed and accepted by the DEP for your PRP plan.
So, what's the actual decision-making factors to whether this hydraulic study is needed, then?
That is based on the permit style that Carol is proposing to do with the general permits. They're feeling they can get the general permits without it. HRG, in their proposal, their, their structure, theirs, that they were gonna get a waiver from the permits but use the study to get the waiver.
What's your professional opinion as to the likelihood of Carol being successful with their approach?
I can't answer that because it depends on who gets the application at the DEP.
But we believe Carol's stormwater management expertise is good enough to have a professional view from there as to this is an acceptable submission approach, correct?
That's, they feel that this is how they can achieve the goal of the project. So, those proposals will give you a bid package, support for bidding, and get you to the point of avoiding the contract.
Yep.
From there, construction services that have been omitted from the scope or not included is going to be included for both proposals.
Yep.
So... I have a question on the second page of the cover there, I guess that's the...
Which, which proposal?
Oh, I'm sorry, HRG. It says it does not include weapons determination, but the scope says it's included. For the Government Services Center basin.
We're talking about basin road right now. Are you looking at the wrong...
Government Services Center basin?
Yes.
HRG's?
Yes, right now, we're talking about basin road stream bank.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
Okay, and that question I have is, the first page says it's not, the DEP has the permit, it's not included with HRG. But then here it says it is on the basin road stream bank. Under HRG's proposal, it says provides an MPDS permit. The scope says it's not included. So, I'm just wondering, is the MPDS permit included within the cost?
Yes. HRG includes the MPDS general permit for infrastructure. It does not include any general permits. So...
Any other questions for Brian?
Well, no, so what actions are we sort of being asked to take tonight?
So, I mean, I, my understanding, Brian, if I'm wrong, is you presented a case that both these proposals can be moved forward or, you know, could be made to work. It's up to the board's decisions to whether they believe Carol can do what they, say they're gonna do. And if they're not successful, they're gonna have to spend the extra money on this hydraulic study, correct?
So, when we came before you at the end of January, you guys, we were requesting to come back with the second proposal from Carol, so you could see a proposal, HRG and a proposal from Carol. These two projects have to move forward this year to stay in scope and in sequence for your PRP plan. Fundamentally for this year. And so, HRG has, like I said, HRG has experience in the township doing a, doing a stream bank restoration. Carol has experience as a comfort dealer, just hadn't done one in your, in your township. On the flip side, for the basin, they've both done basin restoration. And for the township, they each done one in the PRP plan.
If this hydraulic study is needed and Carol needs to bring forward a, you know, proposal to pay for it, is the difference between that current bid and the HRG bid sufficient to cover the cost of the study, in your opinion?
She said the basin road.
So, in their proposal, it says the scope award for not to exceed 65,800. So, it wouldn't exceed that thing?
Now, if you look at, if you look at number eight on page three of their scope, number eight, it's about submitting the permits and then noting that it helps. It indicates that if a hydraulic analysis is required for the submission, if it's determined by the DEP, then of course, you would service them to provide a separate cover.
Separate cover.
That's additional cost, additional proposal, that's additional work.
So, right now, Brian, if the cost they're proposing without that study is 65,800 versus HRG's with the study is 79,600. If we were to, if the board was to support the Carol bid and it was ultimately determined that they do need to do the study, is that $14,000 difference why they did that?
That would be, they would provide us the cost, I did not get that cost.
Do you think it would be the difference between the two bids at this point?
Close to it.
You got 65,800 for Carol and 79,600 for HRG's.
That's 79,600 included.
HRG's cost includes it, Carol doesn't. You don't know what Carol will charge for doing the study. An HA study, you can cross-section to the stream and they may not have it set up to have their surveyor take that information from the start. So, they may have to go back out and do more survey work to start the stream study, do the stream study.
I wonder why they, like, what made them come to the decision that they really need to do it? Do they have experience in this area?
That note says, this is how we typically proceed on these similar studies, on these similar projects. But that's how Carol has done them in the past. So, they're, they're operating under, we can do it without it. But if we need it, it's gonna cost you more.
But then...
Where HRG says, we always need it. My guess is they did it for the stream bank at Sewer Plant when they did that study.
And a cluster included in HRG's?
Yes, HRG includes the study. And there, my guess is HRG has structured their proposal for the stream bank based upon what they've learned going through the process with authority doing their stream bank project, and buffer project.
And was the hydraulic studying required for that?
They were shaking and said, yes.
I believe we did.
Yeah. I don't know if it's...
We don't know. They did it and it was approved, so we don't know if it could have been done without that and with just a general permit approach.
Because they're not getting a general permit, they're getting a waiver of the permit to do it. Whereas, Carol's saying we're gonna get two permits to do it. But we don't need to do the study. We don't think we need to do the study to get the permits. That's Carol's position.
To me, it's worth going with Carol Engineering on this because, you know, their proposal is less. They recognize that they could get, do the study if it is needed, but they believe it is and it can be successful without it. And if they, if they are, then we'll say, I don't know what is this, $14,000. So, you know, the worst case is, they do it and they say, we've gotta come back. Do we need 13 or 15 or 16, whatever it might be?
And even more so, I just, I think that they do really good work in township.
And then, just to confirm, Brian, that this, the Government Services Center basin retrofit project, there's scopes, or there's no big difference between those scopes like we just discussed?
There's a little bit of a difference where Carol Engineering includes information for a Phase 1 bog turtle to clear a tendy hit. They're assuming they're gonna have one out there because of the area and that. HRG does not include that.
Okay, so if they don't need to do this bog turtle study because there isn't the weapons there, then we would actually get credit against this 59,200, just quoted by Carol.
We had an internal study with Sewer Plant, didn't we? Yeah, we had to do it there. Yeah. Steve, what do you, like, what do you think? You were happy with HRG and the, the stream bank restoration?
Yeah, it was a, it was a good one. Carol. They're both confident, yeah.
Yeah, they're both really good.
I mean, my, my preference is to go with what we believe is an overall lower cost underground, so we expect Carol to be successful and, you know, we'll have a lesson learned if they end up saying, well, we, we messed it up, but we do need to do this hydraulic study and we've got to come back and probably ask them for the whole money. So.
Let me ask you a question, just to get further clarification, the hydraulic, the hydrology analysis, but what is that, what kind of information does that produce?
So, it is a survey of the stream itself and we do what's called cross-sections. And depending on the study, it can be anywhere, you do it from your point of where your project is upstream and you do it downstream, depending on the permit and the project, how far you have to go and how far apart the cross-sections are, they can be as close as every twenty-five feet and as far as every hundred feet. When you start, you get from left to right across and you're surveying, you get three-dimensional, like you're looking at a cross-section of a profile of the stream in the floodpoint. And you show existing and then you show proposed conditions as you model it through a hydraulic program. And that's what the H and H study does, to show what the water's gonna do after you.
After you've done your project?
Yes.
So that would be a way to record and document the manu- pollution reduction?
Yeah, pollution reduction is documented through the actual stabilization that's put up on top of the bank, not what's going on in the channel. This shows, the permitting agency, what the water's gonna be, end up doing through some events when you finish the channel. If the channel is wide, you narrow it up, it could elevate the water and change it. So it's, it's called a hydraulic study because you wanna make sure they're not topping banks pushing water directions that you're not supposed to.
So the H and H study, that does not document the manu- pollution reduction you're achieving as a result of the project?
No, the, the pollution reduction is, is being achieved through the stabilization you can do on the stream banks and the reinforcement.
All right, and this, H and H study is usually done, like, with my analysis to make sure that, like, a proposal, those development isn't right, raising the level of, of, that's usually where you see those kinds of studies.
Usually they're done where you're doing a culvert, like you're crossing a stream and you're gonna put an obstruction in the stream and then you have to prove through an H and H study that you aren't changing the flow of the stream by reducing it. Carol's proposal specifically says that they're not changing the stream, so that's why they feel that, that it's not needed, because they're not gonna impact the stream backs in their proposal. HRG may be proposing to do something along the stream banks, which is why they're proposing to do that, for their stabilization project and make sure it's a better stream corridor. I can't talk to the means and methods about how we're going to prepare the stream, do the buffering and the stabilization, that's a means and methods that even the workout will through their design.
I would actually prefer to stay away from the stream than what HRG is suggesting.
Well, you wanna stabilize the banks and would you, would you buffer it, it's not rushing away. So, my guess is HRG is doing something with the stream banks more to, on one side, is my, is my, I'm surmising that based upon that they're doing H and H and Carol's stuff.
Well, HRG, yeah, it says, it's anticipated that the stream restoration project will generate further than one of the third of our programs?
That's the MPDS track. So that's the MPDS track, there's a one meter of vertical. So if you stay less than eight, you don't need it, you delay it to acquire, it'll stay permanent. That number is fixed.
Yeah. Does that mean that they're actually gonna be moving on the stream?
Well, they're, they're proposing to do the length of the stream, so here's a picture of, up on the screen is where, it's, it's in the area where the West Ocean Township and the twenty-point-two acre, so I did mark up a map with a red line, that's the length of the stream that they're looking at. Because of doing both sides and the width you do, the amount of area that they're gonna be disturbing the plug and potentially grading that will be greater than an acre. That's, it's almost five million feet of string and the width of what they're looking to do, both of them have assumed that it's only going to be an acre by time they comp single projects.
I have a question today. Dave, my recollection on the Sewer Authority project was all they did was look at how to stabilize the bank, they did not actually do any change to the bank itself that they agreed. So, there they, it seems to be, I'm just thinking aloud, HRG does these H and H studies, even when they're not gonna disturb the stream bank itself and they're just looking at the stabilization design. So it's a bit, it sounds like it's a bit of an elephant races Cadillac approach.
Well, it could be a little bit of insurance too, because once we're in there working, we get a good storm, everybody downstream is gonna, we point fingers that we changed something, whereas now you've got the study, you can point back that here's where it was before, here's where it is now.
Also, Sean, I think the H and H analysis is probably required for the waiver that they're looking to get the restoration, the waiver of permits for D. That could be why they're doing that.
So they're just, like, there's two ways to, you know, two of the, so they're going one way, Carol said we're gonna do.
But both could blow up, I mean, both of them are based on assumptions and ultimately.
Well, if it's not, if you have the permits, you're gonna be told to do more work or whatever else, so always a risk, so.
If they, if they prove it without the, the project, then we're good. So I'd rather take that gamble and take money.
Okay. I'll be down on that page too, too. Is anyone else on the board, not on that page? I mean, he wants, he wants to move on with the, the proposal.
You want to do it individually, Chris, as a motion?
A motion should be taken.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to, um, appoint Carol Engineering to do the scope as defined their proposal for the Basin Road Stream Restoration Project.
Second motion.
Thank you, Tina. Is there any other board questions on the, the motion? Any public comment or questions on the motion tonight? Very good, we're ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Would another board member like to propose, um, the engineering company for the Government Services Center Basin Restorative Project?
Yes, I will make that.
For Carol Engineering?
For Carol Engineering, for Government Services Center.
You're also.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on the moment? Any public questions or comments? Okay, ready to take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing now, the motion passes four zero. Brian, is there anything else for this item?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is item number six, which is a discussion of possible approval of the following proposals from Carol Engineering for professional services associated with the electrical study undertaken for the West Ocean Township Municipal Complex. The Phase One Electrical Vehicle Charging Station Infrastructure Project and two, a solar energy structural analysis for the public works facility building D. Chris, just remind the board where we are with this.
I suppose Chairman's before the board this evening are two proposals from Carol Engineering Corporation for projects associated with the electrical study that's completed for the municipal complex. Uh, first proposal is before the board, is the first phase of the work associated with the installation of additional electric vehicle charging stations, um, which would essentially be a, um, the infrastructure that would be associated with them, not the actual charging stations. And if you go to, there is a page in the proposal, uh, that shows a plan outlined by Carol Engineering, and showed the locations of them, there are, there would be approximately, what's that count?
Ten?
Twenty.
About twenty.
Twenty, totally.
Uh, there would be ten behind, ten behind the administration building, uh, actually it's more than that.
Twenty.
There would be ten behind the administration building, eight in the garages of the Parks Building, which is Building C, um, two behind, two on the one side of the police department, four to the rear of the police department and four to the side of the police department. Uh, so eight, ten, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Twenty-eight total.
Twenty.
And this would be, this would be, uh, for the actual infrastructure running the conduit in preparation of installing additional, uh, electric vehicle charging stations. And that proposal before the board is forty-six thousand five hundred dollars, I believe. And the scope of work was defined by a small working group that was formed between Chairman Walsh, Supervisor Hellman, Henry Alexander from the SAC, uh, myself, Jamie, Brian, Dave and our facility superintendent, Mike Cacavaro. Uh, we met, we outlined the scope of work that we thought would be reasonable for this timeframe and asked Carol Engineering to provide a proposal to do the actual design work. Um, and the hope would be to potentially utilize this to seek grant funding to actually fund the construction costs and potential installation of the, um, charging stations. So that was the first proposal, that's before the board. Uh, the second proposal is a structural analysis for Building D for solar, a solar energy array on that building. Um, this was recommended as part of the electrical study for converting to solar energy. So they did determine that it was feasible and then we would have to make sure that the route is structurally sound in order to be able to support the array, the equipment.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. I mean, no, I'm sorry, let me, I just wanna say we did budget two hundred thousand dollars in the capital reserve fund towards these efforts.
Yeah.
Did the SAC look at the open base? Do you have a, do you have a?
He did not, but we did discuss it in our meeting that we had on our working.
We should probably talk to the SAC.
I don't necessarily agree with that because we did have the SAC involved in the scope of work for the electrical study, the structural analysis, this is just a structural analysis to make sure that it can support it, I don't think they would necessarily need to really do that.
Does this, uh, work by Carol Engineering include the design of the load management system? Is that part of what's included or is it, is it?
Was that for, was that for the, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, was that for the, for the EV charging system?
Yeah, the EV charging system, the, the scope of work they have, I've looked at it, I can't remember now, does it include the design and the location and the wiring et cetera, what we needed to manage the loads in the ultimate state of these charging stations all being installed and running, or is it like, that's not included at this point and it's basically just the conduit and wires from the, the control panels?
You don't know what the loads want to be. At this point, we're already putting in, looking for two level, twin level two chargers. And what we're looking to do with this particular phase, phase one, is just to put in the conduit infrastructure.
So I have a technical question then about the conduits, do they support all the different levels of EV chargers or just?
That would be a question I would have too. Now, those these conduits that are being proposed, are would they be able to be put in to be able to handle the thirty-two amp level two chargers or the three-phase, four-e volt level three charger? They have to be able to accommodate, you know?
They should level three. And they don't?
We will have a chance to review these.
Yeah.
Well, it goes after bid.
This is, phase one was just the level two charger, primarily around PD and Building C.
Right, but there may be some level threes that we need to put in there.
That's phase two, that was.
And all that, that, I think that's part of what we're trying to accomplish, not to go all in with just level twos at this point, because the technology, it's just changing so rapidly. We're gonna be needing some level threes without doubt.
Yeah, but John, remember we were at the subcommittee meeting, we said, we, the focus right now is to how these vehicles are used, but from the police chief and from admin vehicles, which is what the focus was for phase one, the level twos were perfectly adequate. And if the level three was gonna be fed probably from D building and it would be into where the fuel island is at some future point, and that was the set, that was the next.
Yeah, once, once we.
Phase.
Once we start getting some more vehicles where, where we need the, uh.
Well, I, I think we're gonna need some level twos at the police, uh, building.
Level three, at the police.
Level threes, she has.
Well, these, these garage, these garage, these eight, uh, station, that's where the detective vehicles are, right?
Which ones?
Is one of the patrol chargers, is it there?
Yeah, the garage, the opposite, at the back there.
Yes, the traffic garage.
That's where the police charge the vehicles now, this, this will accommodate that.
Oh, right here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's where we drop their, that's all we have, yeah.
I mean, I'm almost at the point where why are we even putting in level two? Why not just go to the threes? We're gonna need them anyway while they're.
Yeah, I agree, they are much more effective.
But we, we, it's not quite true that we need them anyway. What the team decided was based on the use and how the vehicles are gonna be used, level two, low-cost chargers, there's a demand for those that we need to satisfy this first phase of the project.
For Sean.
I, I went to that meeting and said, it's all level threes and you guys get you, Henry and others all set, no, it's not all level three, this is how we can manage the system.
Well, then explain to me how a level two charger is gonna be adequate for the police.
Good, well, you know, it's.
It's adequate from the beginning of, of our transition because we're only doing vehicles that are used one shift during the day by one person. So they sit here long enough during the night that if they're on a level two charger, they'll be, they'll be good in the morning. We're not talking about patrol vehicles for that situation.
Right, right, but we are going to be investing money to retrofit our municipal complex for many, many years.
No, that's, I agree, at the beginning, and, and those cars, admin detective, those cars could survive, in my opinion, on double twos, because they're here longer.
Forever.
Patrol, that's a different story.
So you're only talking, you're only talking a few cars and people could be capable of level two.
Eleven.
Eleven that could use two.
Eleven for the police.
And that would be.
How many do that, ten? Twelve admin vehicles. I would say, I would say ten, twelve.
And how many chargers would you need for ten to twelve?
Well, there's two. Two cars, so.
Two cars with a charger.
No, I guess my question is, with this plan, with the phase one, right, and we're just looking at, we're not looking at patrol police vehicles, we're just looking at detective or admin, that's fine, but are they still running the conduits that are going to be used later for?
The, the, the level, the level three chargers are a totally separate place, coming from a different building.
So they're, they're gonna be running those conduits at a separate time?
They're, yeah, they're gonna be fed from Building D, which is the streets building.
Okay.
Whereas the conduits we're talking about, phase one, go around the police station and go in the garages of Parks.
And weren't we looking to fuel out from C building?
Yeah.
The, the advantage of this was it gave us a lot of chargers without having to trench in the courtyard and everything else, which is a bigger project and that would be, turn the level three patrol vehicles at some point would be ready for it.
And to the question earlier regarding load management, item number three, I believe this answers that question, item number three on the proposal from Carol Engineering says we will coordinate the controls designed for a load management system for future charging stations.
Okay. There will be a link to that.
Item, uh, item number three on the proposal.
Yeah. Good. So, just talk about the overall project, we approved this today, so you knew the design, the design goes ahead, we either have a bid phase or a responsible contractor to do the installation for our requirements for that. In parallel with that, we're trying to see if there's any grant money to get the actual charging stations themselves. And if there is, great, we'll put in an application, if there isn't, we still have a budgeted amount, we'll ask, we go ahead and purchase one or two of the dual chargers anyway and get them into, uh, sit in there waiting, we go, it's what it's done, we have the capabilities, is that correct?
Correct.
I guess my only question is, they, in the proposal, Carol, they do allocate to site visits. My concern is, I'm not sure if that's enough, the cost to be increased every time they go out, but several hundred dollars per hour in spec, so an engineer's standpoint and designers and implementing it from a construction's standpoint, are two visits enough? It doesn't seem like a good idea.
My answer for that, Tina, would be, reuse panel, smaller projects and others, they provide the works and they have to do what's necessary for them to be able to do the design and deliver the project. You know, the two visits is really what they're gonna have to do, get the information they need, unless we start changing things and saying, oh, you've done some of the work, we want to level three and that, and I have to go out and do some more, then I would expect that they're gonna be able to get what we've done, done.
Okay, I don't mind if we change a little bit of work, I expect that, and I expect more costs associated with that, not only for site visits, but a lot of other things. But here we have a proposal, it's two visits adequate for the work that they're going to do, and I don't want this to increase, we have a price rate down, so.
They present us with the work at a cost and we're saying, well, do it, so they better be able to figure out how many times they need to come out and get information. This to me is how a contractor protects themselves from us, saying, we need to come out and do more, we want to look at this and I want to look at that now, if they're not gonna need, we've been analyzing, you don't need to come out and look at some other part of what you're asking.
Okay, we think that's adequate, there only need two visits and I'm fine with that.
I, I also think, and I don't wanna speak for Carol, I thought, I also think there's probably a level of comfort in the fact that we have, unlike a lot of municipalities, we have an in-house engineer, we have Dave and his crew that are here on site that'll also be monitoring, just, we do that in our project, I'm confident that if there's anything out of the ordinary, Dave or Mike or Mark will report that very quickly.
Mr. Cacavaro will be on this, I'm sure, because we have a history of Dave Cacavaro
Mr. Caglone will be on this, I'm sure, because we have a history of Dave Caglone at the complex.
Now, now goes lawful contracts, we're going to be on a whole other round. Um, Dave, I've got a question for you. The, once this project and the conduit is installed and it's ready to go, who would do the actual installation of the charging stations, the hotel? Would we need the same contractor back or would we?
I think.
Use the folks you use for more minor electrical work?
The, the chief and I just did a webinar last week. The grant that we've been using for the level two chargers that we have, they're going to run out of money sometime in some. So it's not worthwhile, and we only have a 180-day window. So it's not worthwhile jumping on that. That's actually our co-stars. So we could, we could actually buy the unit, have it installed on co-stars. I think I would talk to Carol when we put the conduit bid out, so to put, you know, a clause in that we may do, you know, two, three chargers installed. That way we, we have it with the bid.
Yeah.
We can go that way, depending on where the grant is.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and the responsible contractor should be perfectly capable of doing an installation. Not just pulling in the wire, but also making the termination and installing the chargers as well.
Any other questions from the board?
Well, I just still have a concern about going all in the level twos, which, right now, we're not doing that.
We're not, we're not all in, we're doing.
Yeah, we're just doing two level twos at this time. So we may be able to in the future, if we find that there's a need for a level three, be able to utilize what's in there in order to be able to install that.
Well, no, I think the level threes, because of our loads, the level threes are actually coming out of the other building.
At, at D.
Yeah. That was the only one that we.
Especially how many level twos you put.
D has, uh, D has the room with its generator to have backup power to the level threes.
We all had the original electrical study that was done, like distinctly remember level threes would be fed out of D building and the level twos, although there might have been one of these three.
Yeah, but we've built, we've, we've moved the locations of the level twos from the original study, right?
And also the level, actually the level threes were taken out of the picture.
They put it.
For this.
Well, no, they were, they were in the original study.
Pardon?
They're in the original study.
Yeah, I know the, the original study, but I'm saying for this particular phase, the level threes are moved out.
Right.
Does the news have a generator?
There's one generator that handles the admin building, Park's building, the police building. There's a second generator that handles building D. Building D is its own item, that's why it has the certain ones.
Okay, is there, any other questions from the board? Is there any top, before we go to motions, idea, there's a, what kind of public input is there on this topic? Steve?
Has there been a thought to extend the conduit to the public parking lot?
We, it's a good question. And when the team met, we kicked it around, around what the needs are of the municipal fleet itself and what we, what we, where our focus was at this time. Given some of the constraints we have, the existing electrical infrastructure, and that we weren't proposing running, running in a new fee to be able to do all things to all people all the time, we decided to focus certainly on phase one. It's taking care of the immediate needs of vehicles that we know can be moved to EVs to the municipal fleet, the police vehicles and the admin vehicles. And we just went through a quick map there, you know, 20 odd vehicles and we've got 28 spots that we can, over time, those vehicles can come and replace existing ones, take care of that. Not to say down the road, we move to phase two or whatever else, we won't see if we can expand some public charging at the complex, but that was not a priority that the team agreed on this first phase.
I mean, just because you're digging up the parking lot, it's, you know, it's easier to do it, that's all, what do you have?
Well, it's actually very, but it, you're not thinking too much of parking lot.
The, the front, front parking lot.
It's still there.
It's solid, it's solid internal to the complex here, those spots. Good question, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so let, let's see, um, so at this point, we're looking for a motion to approve the, um, proposal from Carol Engineering to do the design for this first phase of electrical vehicle charging station infrastructure. Do you, we could also consider the solar energy structure analysis at the same time, or we can talk about that separately with boards of, of designers.
I would do it separately.
Okay, so, I will make the motion then to, um, award Carol Engineering, um, per that proposal, the design, et cetera, associated with phase one electrical vehicle charging station infrastructure. Do a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tina. Any board comments or questions on the motion? Any public comments or questions? Very good, we'll take the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There is no opposition, the vote carries four zero. Okay, second item is the solar energy structural analysis for the public works facility. Do you have any comments on that or?
No.
Okay. Any considerations, Dave, that the board needs to be aware of for that? You believe, I think, it's, that you think it is probably adequate, but.
When, when that building was originally designed, it was designed with the thought of a solar office. And I'm, I'm pretty sure it's going to be okay.
Was there anything in the prints from the building D when it was constructed that would indicate that it was?
They actually installed, there's three or four conduits run to the roof that were just not cut through the roof to put solar panels on. So that's how, that's how far along this thought was getting.
So what structural, do we need a structural analysis or do we need a design review of the, the design of this, the construction of the actual building to enable an engineer to do the calculations to say it's capable of doing it without actually?
I think they need, I think they need to look at it and they need to look at, at structure. We, there's a problem, when that building was originally designed, it didn't have the snow guards. And we've gotten a lot of damage from the snow coming off the roof. We fixed that with installing proper snow guards. Once we put the solar panels on, that's where I'm worried. We, they need to look at something to account for that stuff because there's so much roof and it's in such a pitch that it comes off. If you're standing there, it's a.
Are you going to get that from just an assessment though, or is that part of what the design would have to look into?
Well, I think they're going to have to look at that.
Is that included in that scope?
It says here the report, it states whether the roof structure can support the additional load of solar panels and will note any panel per square foot limitations. What is it, just saying yea or nay? It doesn't even give any.
Well, it wants to get further into the design too for that, but there, there's a lot of snow load on that roof.
Dave, are you going to be talking with them then when they come out here and telling them about?
Yeah.
Well, they're asking for 5,400 hours to tell us whether or not the roof structure can accommodate additional load of solar panels. That's just saying whether can it not. It is, and it's not saying whether, if it cannot, what needs to be done to make it so. So the report is rather limited, it just is telling us whether it can do it or not. I think we would need to have a study done, we're going to have it done, that would tell us if it can't handle the, the solar panels, what needs to be done in order to further support the structure to allow.
Wouldn't that be, that report have, if they, if they make a conclusion that it's not, can't support it, they'll tell you why.
They're going to have to know even what panels to account for the weight.
Yeah, the panels can be, they can be, who knows what size they'll be, what weight, don't they?
So, I mean, my guess is they're going to look at a worst case scenario, so the panels are these heaviest type of panels and it's going to be full of snow and that way the cant can not be managed by the existing structure. That's what we're going to get out of this 5,400.
Yeah, we're, we're going to know what the, what the total load is that we can put on. Yeah, and then they can design the, the panels accordingly.
They're forgetting, they're forgetting the report and what paying for. I would prefer they have a PE seal on it also, they're not stating that in here, they're just saying a structural engineer. I'd rather have something that's stating.
They would, the structural engineer does not have a PE. They would not, for their own liability reasons, there's no way they would not have.
They don't say that.
Yeah, I mean, I.
They don't, they don't say that.
That's a great clarification, but I'm almost 99.9 times.
Oh, I agree, I agree with that, but it should be in the proposal also. I think that, you know, we should say that the.
Right, you have to rely upon that sealed report and they may mistake and you've spent money on relying on it.
So I would just say this proposal should be modified to say that we should.
Yeah, I'm going to guess the idea of getting structural analysis, I'm just questioning the stupid work, that's. What exactly do we have?
Well, my understanding is they're going to evaluate the roof structure and the roof system that is currently installed. Evaluate it based upon where it is, not from design, but how it's aged and what's there. They're going to inspect it, make sure there's no issues with the structure.
They're not going to actually go up there and inspect those beams and say, yeah, there's a corrosion on this or there is a corrosion. They're not going to do that, they're just going to do the tabletop design work. So this is the design of the, the roof. It can hold this much weight, if you put solar panels on, they, they weigh this much, snow on them equals this. They compare those two numbers and see if it's okay. And that's 5,400 dollars, that's what we're going to get.
Okay.
If, if we don't think that, if we're not happy with that, we can say we're not going to approve it and call to Chris.
You can ask for, so, so the scope is going to give you, this is how much additional weight your roof can handle. And then from there, you can back into a solar panel design. Or you could request a modified proposal to do a more in-depth analysis and tell you, because the panels, it depends on what you want to do, what the panels weigh and how much you want to generate. And that, there's so many different options out there. This is a basic study to tell you that you have this much left in the roof system. That's enough, that's just right.
I still think that it would say, based on your typical solar panel, you'd be able to put, you know, hit the other one up there or whatever it is. I mean, that's what I expect we'd be able to count there.
It's part of the structural engineering study. To me, it's just another calculation.
Well, if we don't, if we don't have the clarity we want, we can, we can wait and have Chris give a little bit more details to what we're actually getting for 5,400 dollars. Is that where the board is tonight?
Yeah, I'm, yeah.
I, I think you're a little satisfied.
It's just a matter of what do we, what do we need to get done to move us further along to be able to do this.
Well, I, I mean.
I don't feel comfortable approving something if I don't know the first step of the work.
I think John's view as to what we should be getting or what we might want to be asking for is different than what I think Chris has put in here in terms of a proposal, Chris from Carol Engineering. Because if we are fully committed to doing more evaluations of how to beef up the roof, that was not what we've told them was this initial study. The initial study was just, look, one of the things we would like to consider is can the existing roof structure handle solar panels, yes or no? And that's what we're being, I believe the proposal is intended to answer. So if we're not clear on that, we should get that clarification.
And I was thinking ability study, didn't it come back that they're actually going to be that much solar? That was what they demanded?
28% of the volume, what I think it was.
We, we, yeah, it was, it was reasonable. And this is the one building that it was definitely reasonable to put it on. The other buildings were much less amenable to it.
It's orientation, yeah.
So, but, you know, before we plow on with a, a, an analysis, project design analysis that says, hey, what will we get out of it? What could it be? What's the cost for that project? A simple answer to the question, you could even put something on there on our versus expecting what the case to do.
Do you have a recall, what do you, in the, in the inspection date indicate that it would be solar ready roof?
It, yeah, um, in the, in the initial design of that building, it was thought to put solar on, but we couldn't get any grants, any sort of.
Oh, really? So the initial concept was to put solar on?
That was the initial concept from the beginning. That's why the conduit's in place.
Yeah, right.
But we just, we don't know what that final load looks like.
Right, and things have changed since the load panels we have changed and so forth.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm hearing the board would like to table this for tonight and get the qualification from Carol Engineering to. Well, we'll get them in sync with the board as to what we think you want versus what they.
Make sure it includes professional engineer, Tina. Yes, thank you.
Very good, well, we want to agenda item number seven. Seven, yes. Discussion of possible authorization to sell the following surface vehicles in, from the West Ocean Township Police Department, a 2015 Ford Explorer XLT, a 2016 Ford Interceptor SUV, a 2016 Ford Interceptor Sedan. Chris?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, for the board this evening is authorization to sell surplus vehicles. Uh, three vehicles were just outlined for the agenda, uh, for the board this evening. Uh, we did research, uh, these vehicles are no longer in service, they're in, they're now in a position to be sold. We did research the estimated value, um, through Kelly Blue Book on three vehicles that are for the board this evening. Uh, they range anywhere from $9,900 to around $16,000, depending on the make and model. Authorized for the sale, the vehicles outlined will be placed on municipal as we've done with recent sales and then the winning letters will be brought back to the board for approval once the bidding closes.
Thanks, Chris.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board? Is there a motion then to approve the sale of these vehicles through municipal? Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tina. So a motion is second to sell these three vehicles through municipal. Is there any other board comments or questions on the motion? Is there any public comments or questions on the motion?
Are, are you going to buy more electric police cars? I hear there's only two right now. Is that your plan?
The intention is, wherever possible, at this point, if there's a, a valid option for what is being retired or replaced, then we would, that's the way we're going to go. Some vehicles right now do not have electric vehicle equivalent. So in that case, we end up replacing it with a, as it is already in kind type of design. Questions, is there any other questions? Care to take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes four zero. Next on the agenda is item number eight, discussion regarding possible grant applications, applications for Chester County's Vision Partnership Program. Again, Chris, over to you.
Um, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I will kick this off and then I will turn to Jamie to add anything else, since she did a lot of research on this topic as well. Um, so we had discussion before the board this evening regarding possible applications of the county's vision partnership program. Uh, so this program offers planning grants through Chester County, municipalities, multi-municipal groups while achieving consistency with the implementation of the county's comprehensive plan, which is Landscapes Three. Uh, the program opened on February first and applications are due by March 17th. And there are traditionally two rounds of funding per year, one in the spring, one in the fall. And there would be a requirement of a 40% minimum match from the, um, from the municipality. Uh, there are two options with this program, a cash grant where the municipality receives direct funding to pay for consulting costs and an in-kind grant where the Chester County Planning Commission serves as the project consultant. Essentially, these are, these are document formation planning grants. Um, so during the preparation of the 2023 budget, uh, development of a park recreation, open space plan was discussed. As a result, we allocated $75,000 in the budget in the capital reserve fund towards this project. Um, but since the adoption of the 2023 budget, there has been a discussion about updating the township zoning ordinance, primarily due to the fact that the current zoning ordinance doesn't fully address the redevelopment, which is kind of what we're seeing mostly with a lot of applications in the township. Um, in advance of this discussion tonight, Jamie met with Bill DeGelfrey from the Chester County Planning Commission who administers this program. Um, I'll let Jamie kind of go over some of her discussions with Mr. DeGelfrey.
Yeah, so when talking with Phil, um, it was make sure that only one BTP contract can be opened at, at a time. So, um, once that's awarded, this is a project rule that we'll get it to close out before you do an apply for another BTP grant award or anything. So, um, we're looking at, you know, selecting one project to pursue for grant funding. Um, and it seems like we kind of have to, right, the zoning ordinance update in the park recreation and open space plan. Most of the projects that have been funded have provided more than a 40% now. Um, so that's helpful in getting a, a grant awarded. The grant rounds are competitive. Um, they park recreation, planning, uh, planning proposals are going for between 80 to 90,000, I think, for, for each plan. Um, zoning ordinance says, looks like they're around 100,000. So there's a cost there to consider as well, uh, difference between the two. And, um, I think that they do offer, um, an in-kind service to help you with the writing of your zoning ordinance update. Um, but right now, the Chester County Planning Commission has a lead time to even get on that list of like about two years. So, um, you're kind of looking at going private for both of these plans. Um, and so I think those costs are pretty accurate about like for total cost for those, those kind, that kind of work. Um, they're very different, very different types of planning work, right? A plan, um, for parks, recreation and open space is going to be for a, a different set of, um, is going to be for a different set of ideas, basically. And then the zoning ordinance update is pretty technical-focused work. And so that's why there's a little bit of a price difference there. So if you guys have any questions about, about that.
What is the cost of each one?
That's what I'm saying, so the zoning, the zoning ordinance update, they, Phil said are coming in around a hundred thousand.
That's total without the grants.
Mm-hmm. And then the park recreation and open space plans are around eighty to ninety thousand for a municipality of our size.
And you're saying there's like a two-year waitlist to have the Chester County Planning Commission be the ones to, to help with that?
To do in-kind work.
Are they typically coming in lower cost than a consultant? Or not really?
Um, I think at the end of the day, yeah, you're going to be paying a little less. If you're using a grant for the zoning ordinance update, you're getting, you know, fifty percent cover, you might only pay the fifty thousand. I mean, it's really, it just depends on what you're looking for. I, it's very technical, particular work to have a zoning ordinance update performed. So there's not as many people out there that do it.
Can I keep, I'm working with two municipalities that did it with the BPP and did not have enough, granted, it was during COVID. They, they appointed a task force. Task force was very not helpful. And they ended up with a work product that they're not adopting. And I'm rewriting it. And they, we may not get the money back from the county. It's a lot of work to do as zoning ordinance update. So if you, one thing I would say is that what I'm, what I'm learning now from that project was that the board themselves, because they were new board members, they were just learning. They really could have narrowed the scope of what they wanted to be studied, and they have done that now. But so I would just say that if you're going to do it, make sure going in, you know the scope of what you're trying to change in the ordinance. If it's, we want our whole ordinance rewritten, well, that's going to cost you a lot more than a hundred thousand dollars, in my opinion. If it's, we really just want to focus on the areas for redevelopment along our commercial corridors, that's going to be much more narrow in scope. And you have to have people that are going to be involved, providing input to the planner. Because the planners, without living and working and knowing West Ocean and understanding the issues that you've had with your ordinance, they're really not going to be got, they're going to sort of, it's just going to be outdated. They're not going to know exactly what to focus on and how to draft it. So there really has to be involvement from staff level and town to resident and board levels. Planning Commission, luckily, you guys have very active boards that have been here. But that's my experience with these zonings is that they can sort of go on a path that doesn't really end up with the work product that you're looking for, and you spend a lot of money.
So just to clarify, Jamie, with the Vision Partnership Program, there's two routes that can be done. We can either apply for a cash grant or we can apply for Chester County Planning Commission to be basically our consultant. Now, if we went the second route, would there be any cost for the township to go that second route?
Yeah, so you're paying, you're paying the planning commission to kind of act as a consultant, since they end up giving you a cost for that. But that's what I was saying, there's an eighteen to twenty-four month lead time for, on that.
Right. I'm saying, we did get a list, if we did take them on as our consultant, we would have to pay them in addition to having them as a consultant.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what that cost might be? Is it based upon the percentage of the, we have no idea?
I didn't get an estimate from Bill on that. I, I mean, I really don't know. I, I would assume it's, you know, you still sort of pay your fifty percent, forty percent, but I don't actually know.
I would think it'd be a lot less though if it was a nonprofit-making enterprise versus a private company that's in it to make money. You know, I mean, planners or, or we choose that.
Well, we don't know what that cost would be until we get through it.
So my question is, do we want to apply for the planning of the parks or do we want to apply for the zoning ordinance update? And personally speaking, I think I would rather apply for those zoning.
Is it a meat or a question, though? Because I, as I was listening to the conversation here, we want both of these things moved forward, though. So one, we can say, right now, we can ask for a grant for the parks, right, open space, you know? We've been telling the parks in right forward, we have something we want to do, we've got some strategic goals around, wanting to have a more comprehensive view of what we can do with our parks. And we were kind of energized about that in the last twelve months. We could say in 2023, we're going to apply for this BPP grant or the match, go for the dollars, whatever was in theirs. You know, it's going to cost us eighty, ninety, and we're going to get forty or fifty, potentially if we're successful, right? That was the potential way forward.
And that.
The way the zoning, one of the options that we've kicked around a little bit is, you know, listening to what Kristen had to say, maybe they didn't give the lead time on this anyway, especially if we want their consultants to do it. We were leaning towards potentially saying, we need to get two or three planning capable companies to come in and present to the planning commission about their skill sets and capabilities. Let the planning commission work through kind of questions that Kristen posed around. Is it everything? Is it this the focus? What do you want to do? Can you chop this up? How does it all work? We really need some more thinking doing around what we want to do with the zoning update. And this, you know, we could be doing that work now so that in 24, we can say, right, we're ready. We have a good way forward. We want to go out and RFP planning services to do this good work. And we've certainly got to learn a lot about what we, these companies can do, or what we really want. And, you know, we can apply for that grant in 2024. Is that a way forward? That would be acceptable, right?
Absolutely. And if we take that long to get to that point?
The one thing, the one thing I will say as it relates to both these items, I completely believe that your zoning ordinance needs an overhaul. The zoning ordinance was adopted in December of nineteen seventy-two. And it has become, what I, what I've seen throughout it is it's, there have been patches put on it. It doesn't even, it needs an overhaul. It's very big and cumbersome. However, I do believe, and it's not a criticism towards anybody, it's just an observation. But I know that there is a desire, and at least in discussion in the last year amongst this board, to do work within our parks. And one of the problems we have when we apply for grants is we don't have a dedicated plan that we can point back to and saying, we want to improve this park and it's tied to this plan. And really, without that plan, it's going to hinder our ability to get funding. So I think in terms of, I think a good path forward for this would be to move forward with our budgeted park improvement plan application, while at the same time seeking input from professional planners that we can get an idea on what a good, one, a good scope of work would be and a cost so that we can adequately budget for it in our twenty, in potentially our 2024 budget.
For the zoning.
For the zoning.
I agree. I think we, you know, just proceed with the parks now. We're going to zone it next year.
Wait, now we did budget seventy-five grand for the parks and for that plan, so that's kind of already been in the works.
And we'll get some of that back, hopefully, through the grant.
Yeah, hopefully.
I just feel a little bit, you know, along with the development that's happening, but I wonder if we step these things?
There is, even if you're going for a zoning ordinance rewrite, if there are things, there are things that come to the attention of the planning commission or board supervisors, there's nothing that says that we can't make changes to our existing zoning ordinance to address those issues. But I'm thinking that in terms of like actually defining what our scope should be, I think it'd be better to like wait a little bit and better define that scope of what we're going to try and find or something.
Yeah, we should take our time on that. It's too.
It's also a long process. So there's not going to be any rush to that, at the end of the day. And so we're in an update. If you're talking about an overhaul, it takes, it takes a good two years.
Two years. Even if we started today.
Yeah.
And you need people to really be engaged in it.
And that's also assuming that everything goes smoothly. I can tell you, when I worked in Malibu, we did, um, we did an update to our residential zoning districts. And just that from implementation to adoption took eighteen months. And that was, we had the brainy mind concern, so.
Well, not only that, this year, we've had a lot of administrative changes to the staff. And it's going to take a lot of time, the staff, to do this. You know, time is what I'm hearing, your time to make sure it's done right. So I think next year would be a better people in place for a year that this would affect. We have an extra year to get those people to speed because of the changes we have in the distribution recently.
Doug, I want to ask you, if you could weigh in here what you're thinking. You're the chair of the planning commission. You've had a lot of experience in this area. What do you think about how we can best proceed here?
Well, I think as, as Chris laid out, what the priority should be and the process should be, I have to agree with that. I, I view from here on out that we, we basically have a dual, two steps to be followed concurrently. One would be for the planning commission supervisors, the land, uh, planning committee, to lay out what it is we want to study. You know, what are the issues that need to be addressed in our rewrite of the zoning ordinance? At the same time, invite several consultants to come in and talk about, you know, what, how they see, they, they could fit into a rewrite of a community that's in the redevelopment process. You know, we're, we don't have open space anymore. Open space as an undeveloped plan. And redevelopment of, of a community has unique problems or opportunities that, you know, and some novel ideas we, I'd like to see incorporated into the zone ordinance. So the second step being talking with consultants that have done this. But I think we're on the right track by sort of delaying, seeking out funding while we sort of lay out the stage for, you know, where we want to go.
Yeah, I think that's the way to frame it. We want to start the journey of a thousand miles for the step. We want to get along with that. We have, the board has an urgency around it. The funding piece, we can wait. But we're really asking you, Doug, the planning commission, to start that, with staff, to start that process of bringing in these companies to have those discussions and get, understand what this could look like and what the planning commission's thinking and get the board input. So we're not here in six, less than six months before we start preparing budgets. And while we're just about to get going with that, we need to start that for a while.
We need to start soon.
Yeah.
And there are plenty, there are plenty of qualified firms in southeastern Park, Pennsylvania, who can come and give us an idea on the cost and scale of work. And we need three or four right off of that or even a couple.
So is the board comfortable with?
Can we rely on your expertise? Should we start getting some invitations out there with these folks?
Absolutely. We could bring in, we, I think, Doug, me and you, I think we have three or four that we need to round for that.
Yes.
So it's what Tess said, is the board comfortable with, you know, we're really kind of asking the planning commission and John Colley is on to take the lead on working with this process?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, then, let's go back and I, I would like to propose, I'd like to make the motion to make the application for a Chester County Vision Partnership Program grant for a park and rec.
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe a motion would be necessary at this time because there will have to be, kind of the purpose of this discussion was to be to prepare the necessary resolution that would need to come before the board. So if you wanted to give us the direction on how to proceed, then we can prepare the resolution accordingly.
Okay, what's the deadline again for the submission?
March seventeenth, so we would get it in front of the board on then, March seventh.
Okay, that's fine.
Do they have to decide whether they want to do the cap of the in-kind or the match? Do they have to decide that now? Is that in the resolution or?
I, I think it's just going to be capped.
Okay, right, that was a turn.
And we don't need to select, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't need to select a consultant this time. We can do.
We do not.
But don't you have to use only approved planners from the county?
Yeah, the list is pretty large.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's not like you can search up whoever? You have to use their approved planners?
And I apologize, I didn't mean to interrupt that.
No, no, you can stop, you can go too far down that road. Also, but you have the direction now, so for the next meeting, we'll be ready with the resolution. And the board's okay with that, which is correct?
Yes.
All right, good. Thank you, good discussion. Uh, next on the agenda is item number nine, which is discussion on possible approval to dedicate the courtyard of the West Ocean Township Municipal Complex in remembrance of former supervisor, Dr. Robert S. White. Unfortunately, his son, Doug, is not able to attend tonight. He is under the weather. He's not feeling well, but he has communicated to the board, I believe via email.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, would you like me to read the email that he sent?
If absolutely, because I don't have a chance to see that.
All right, so this was received by Dr. Doug White this afternoon at five o'clock. Dear Board of Supervisors, please accept my apologies for being absent at tonight's meeting. Thank you so much for your decision to honor and recognize Dr. White in the beautiful and meaningful gesture and official action. Thank you to those residents who came and took time from your busy schedules to express your support. Dr. White's official township journey began in nineteen eighty with appointment to the planning commission and serving in that capacity until December nineteen ninety-five. And as township supervisor when he was first elected in the fall of nineteen ninety-five, and served from January nineteen ninety-six until his tragic, until his tragic sudden loss on August thirteenth, two thousand fourteen. Dr. White's accomplishments and achievements were many, but none would have been possible without the support from his wife, Mrs. Judy White, and the hard work and dedication of his fellow supervisors throughout the years. Mr. Ed Meekum, Mr. Ray Halberson, Ms. Patricia McElvein, Mr. Phil Cook Corvo, and Mr. Ted Murphy, and the wonderful and supportive staff that worked with him too. Dr. White loved this township and its residents so much, and he always had fun performing his duties and added the occasional dry humor and jokes. Optimism and perseverance were his hallmark trademarks. Thank you and respectfully, Douglas White.
Thank you, Chris. I see that Mr. Corvo and Mr. Meekum are here tonight. If you would care, if you want, you could say a few words. It's up to you.
It's just, I like to say it was a real pleasure working with Dr. White over the years. And when Doug called me the other day to let me know about this meeting tonight, and I was thrilled to be able to come over and be part of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Age catching up with the age. But, you know, Bob was an interesting individual. I was the first to meet him, but I've elected him to township for years. And I expected a very adversarial relationship with my fellow two wives, and he made that thing happen. And, and he called me almost every day when we discussed various township issues. He was a wonderful gentleman. And I, I'm a little teary-eyed here. I miss him today. He had a tragic accident at a shop break. Probably see the, he's two people.
Did he have a good time with one of his boat?
Yeah, yeah, he was still working on the, on the Jersey Bay.
Yeah.
We go down there. Of course, small man, did he jump on a ride on a boat? He was quite a member. But, no, he was an interesting individual. Thanks, I miss him today. Consider him a good friend. Any consideration? Sorry. Any consideration you have, you know, in, in the part that is named, I, and a lot of people, it's actually very appreciative. Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem at all. Thank you, Phil, and thank you both for those very kind words in your remembrance of Dr. Robert White. I didn't know him personally, but he has had a massive impact on this township and what it looks like today, working with good folks like yourself. So, so thank you for those words. Just to let everyone know, myself and Ashley and Stan, Chris, had a chance to discuss with Doug and, and his mom Judy, what they would prefer in terms of a remembrance dedication. We talked about several options with them, including a trail of the new park, Gerocian Park. And at the end of the day, they, he, they preferred to actually look at the courtyard complex here at the municipal building. For the way that this complex took shape over those years that Dr. White was involved, that was really a big part of his legacy, and they'd say that they would prefer to see us dedicate the courtyard here in his memory. So that's actually the decision that was made by Doug and Judy. So tonight, then, we're looking to, for the board to formally accept that dedication of the courtyard at the West Goshen Township Municipal Complex in remembrance of former supervisor Dr. Robert S. White. So I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Is there anyone else who would like to say anything about the motion or Dr. White at this point?
I'd like to make a comment. I did know Dr. White, and even though we were on different sides and the political divide, he was a gentleman and he's a kind of person that you could have an honest discussion, the common ground being what's to the, for the best interest of the township residents. And I think that was his concern going forward. And just in respect to his years of service, and I think he was a good man.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Very good, then all take a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition?
Couple of questions. Do we have a plaque that's going to be designed for the dedication?
We will design, we will design a plaque and it'll be placed in the courtyard of the municipal complex.
And have we set a dedication ceremony date?
No, we have not. I was going to work that out apparently. I was thinking sometime in the spring, we had, Mr. Lear and I had discussed doing, doing a ceremony as well to update the names of the plaques in the courtyard because it is coming updated as well. Maybe try and combine those events into something, so probably something in the spring. But I will coordinate that with Doug and his mom.
Now, we look forward to Doug being present for this next time and so rare for him to miss a meeting.
Doug did send along these pictures to me last week that we included in the collage that's being projected, and I think he'll be happy to hear that we did include this as well.
Very cool. Thanks, Chris. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 10, which is discussion impossible approval of Resolution Number Nine, 2023, authorizing the destruction of certain records of West Goshen Township pursuant to the Pennsylvania Municipal Records Manual. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, for the board this evening is Resolution Number Nine dash 2023. This would authorize the destruction of certain records of the township pursuant to Act 428 of 1968, as well as in accordance with the Municipal Records Manual. These involve records of finance, planning, zoning, and park and recreation apartments. A list of all the identified records have been outlined in the Resolution Number Four Board. These all meet the requirements of the Municipal Record Manual for destruction. And I'd like to thank Jamie, really took the, took the lead on getting this together to make some space in our filing systems. So thank you, Jamie, and also thank you to, and Christine and Ken, who are also helping put this together.
I have one question relative to that, and also in the resolution forwarding. Is this, are we destroying electronic or paper or book?
These are paper.
Okay, then we should probably say that in the resolution versus disposition of records. Maybe we should say paper? Just as records.
Because we need to distinguish, so we have electronic version forever, right?
Do we electronic?
We destroy that after a certain time too.
I don't believe we have.
No.
No, we don't destroy?
No, ever.
But we have electronic versions of a lot of these records. Some of them we do, some we don't.
I mean, some we don't have electronic, I guess, versions of, we can't speak to some other park and rec, you know, some are, you know, programs, some of the summer program stuff, like I don't know what they have digitally, but for, for planning and zoning, we do typically have all of that digitally at this point. But for residential permits, you don't have to retain it after five years, and so the paper can go, the digital is going to be kept.
We just changed the resolution so you think about this.
Change that.
What does the Act, what's Act 428, what records must remain in a hard copied format? Are there any records that we have to hold forever?
Commercial building permit applications we have to retain forever. I believe land development approvals we have to retain, imper夫tivity, certain types of, certain types of personnel file, I believe that's our.
Times files that we have to keep forever. There's a very large manual that doesn't make exactly how long you must retain and exactly what, so it's an act, it's very specific per the type of record that it is.
It's set by, I believe, the museum, the museum.
Is the Act allowing us to convert these to digital format?
There's no prohibition against it, but there's no, a lot of these aren't necessary to retain, so that's why they're, that's why they're seeking to be insured.
You're not even required to retain them electronically if you don't want to. Right, that's, that's an option that you have, you don't have to, right, these records.
Okay. I'll, why make a decision? Would the one change to paper in the resolution?
Okay, so Tina, you've made the motion to approve Resolution Number Nine, 2023, authorizing destruction of certain records of West Goshen Township. Is there a second?
Okay.
Actually, the second. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? Okay.
This is just like a tangent to leak related question. Is there going to be a, like a shred event for like my own papers that I can get rid of? Do you have any shred events coming up?
Police coordinator, we're gonna.
It's not official, but the first weekend.
First weekend, oh, okay.
When there's something official, we'll put it out on the website.
Yeah, I've been looking and haven't seen anything yet, so.
Will it just be shredded or will it be electrized?
Yeah. Because I have some, I have some records to dispose of.
Our, our recycling coordinator, I think, generally coordinates this.
It's, it's all set up, it's just waiting for the EP to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Is there any opposition? Here it is, motion passes four zero. Item number 11, reports for the month of January 2023. First off is the police report presented by Chief Michael Carroll.
Thank you. Thank you. Report for January 2023 from the police department. We responded to 2,384 calls for service, 31 of those were alarm calls and 4 of those alarms were deemed valid. We responded to 66 accidents, 22 of which were reported accidents, and we drove a total of 16,961 miles. I would perform extra traffic enforcement on South High Point Road, South High Street, West Chester Pike, Sunset Hollow Road, Grove Road, Alkin Lane, Green Hill Avenue, Taylor's Mill Road, and South New Street. In the area of career development, we did our normal monthly act of 18 certifications, Lexi full daily trainings, our ERT, our emergency response team units monthly training. Officer McGee attended acute stress and human performance considerations and used force events. Officers May and Riley attended tips for successful supervisors, and Officer Ash and Officer Vigilio attended their MITSAP, so motor fire safety updates. We, speaking in the second, in the area of assist two, we assisted on 40 incidents with other departments for a total of 15.6 hours, and we received 18 different assist on calls, and the hours don't really correlate. So that is the report from the police department. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Why do we need extra patrol in those streets and Alkin and Valdes?
We do extra traffic enforcement on specific streets every two weeks for rotating through them. So everyone gets a little extra report.
How is the recruitment going for the opposition?
Good, we're, we're getting through the process, we're conducting a background check right now.
So you picked a candidate?
We did. And we will be prepared before April to have a candidate brought before you.
So the hire date was, is it, do you expect to be April first?
I'd have to look at the calendar and see where the dates fall, but it would be beginning of April.
And give us an update also on the process of going through the lieutenant rotation, the sergeant rotating, the lieutenant job. How quickly do you think you'd be able to make a decision there?
So we're in the fifth, fifth month, or no, excuse me, the fourth month of five month process. We've dealt with a little more than a month here.
Okay. You see the, the, us having an event to celebrate those two outcomes in the April timeframe?
So definitely, definitely knock on wood, the new hire, and at some point the other.
It could be a little lag between the two.
It could be.
And just for the record, give us an update on the SRO contract agreement with the West Chester Area School District. Has that finally been signed off and finalized?
Signed, sealed, delivered. We sent out an invoice to them. I don't, I don't know that we did pay yet. The police, I think we sent out a couple weeks ago.
I have a child at one of the schools, and they sent a really nice video of the police. That was really, really nice. They introduced themselves, they explained what they were doing at the school. I just thought it was a nice extra step for the parents to realize. I'm sure a lot of parents are concerned about kids taking it in school, so it was nice to get that email and meet the person.
This was a West Goshen person or was it one of the other schools?
All three.
All three did a video.
Yeah.
Feeling that.
And then finally, my last question is, we recently acquired a F-150 Lightning electric vehicle. Can you tell us where that's at as far as putting that into service and how much work is happening?
Sure, it's not fully outfitted yet, but it's usable and we use it from time to time. We're just waiting on the light, light package radio to go in.
So you think another week or two or?
I don't, I mean, it's, we're just waiting on a date for them to install.
Have you been using it at this point?
Yes.
Okay. You don't have to have it towed by the township.
Knock on wood.
Good. Anyone got, any other questions for the police chief? Anyone in the public have a question with the chief? Okay, thank you. We also have our monthly reports from our fire and EMS partners. Is there any questions from the board that need follow-up? These people have put, does the board have any questions on, on the data that was provided for the month of January? No? Okay, well, we move on to agenda item number 12, which is board of supervisor announcements. On my left, Tina?
Yeah, a few things. January 5th, I attended a webinar on how we can better recruit volunteer firefighters on PISA. And we're going to talk about the outcome of that at our next coalition meeting. It's going to be Thursday night, it's Thursday night. Also went to 113th, the PBT Fitness for the Police, and hired a new position. The 19th of January, attended a police community meeting, which was again very productive and well done and useful. On the 26th, I attended a COG meeting where we presented some issues that came out of the coalition, which we will receive that night. And then we will have our meeting, I said Thursday. We also did, as a group, the pipeline emergency exercise, test our incident communication policy on February 15th, and that's it.
Thank you, Tina. Ashley?
Yeah, so I also attended the West Goshen Community Meeting with the police department. It was really well attended, I think, this time, and I'm looking forward to the next one. On the 26th, we had our first COG meeting, so I was elected vice chair of COG, and the topic of that was cybersecurity, which is a very interesting topic, and makes me sort of want to make sure that we stay on top of cybersecurity here in West Goshen. The 24th was the Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting where they elected their yearly officers, so Kenny Alexander, founder of Sheriff, the FAC, Melanie Miles is vice chair, and Dorothy Vernon is the secretary. Mike Dunn from Brandywine Urban Forest was the guest speaker, talking about ordinance provisions, but he's written sort of through his landscape, you know, working with developers and kind of, but, you know, they're given that, so. And the 15th, we had our parks and rec meeting, which I think Chris has enough data on.
Okay, thanks, Ashley. John?
Yeah, I also attended the January 19th, West Goshen Township Advisory Committee. We could have had a board meeting on that because all the boardroom is really dark. So it was really well, well attended. I'm looking forward to the next one, the future ones. Next one, the biggest in April, the chief has set that date. Also attended the January 23rd Fire and EMS Coalition meeting. We had Representative Bielli there for the 156 attending also, and he was able to introduce himself and be introduced to all the members of the coalition. And our next meeting, like Tina said, is on this Thursday. On the January 30th, I had the opportunity to catch up with Chief Carroll and took a drive, test drive in the new F-150 Lightning, and it's a pretty impressive vehicle. Looking forward to more of these vehicles being changed over to all-electric in the future. On February 1st, on Wednesday, we had a virtual meeting with all the board members, not all the board members, but with three of the board members and staff with the Representative Bielli for the 156, and we discussed issues of concern and possible legislative efforts going forward that would be a benefit to the township. On February, this is the 6th, I met with a resident concerning access to Cooper Smith Park, and that remains, all that needs to be researched. I did that discussion with Chris Pacheco today on that, about how best to proceed. On February 15th, we had a tabletop exercise with the Chesapeake County Department of Emergency Services, along with a transfer, Goshen Fire and the West Goshen Police Department and more of the staff members, testing our incident communication policy, which I think was a very good exercise. And we had an opportunity to find out areas of which we need to address as far as making it even better. And I'm looking forward to their final report, which the CCDES will issue as a result of that tabletop exercise moving forward. That's it.
Thank you, John. Well, I attended quite a lot of the meetings that have already been mentioned, so the police department community meeting, the discussion with Representative Chris Bielli, the event with the tabletop exercise, they were all good meetings and very enlightening and educating for all the participants involved. The board held executive sessions on January 20th to discuss the performance objectives with the township manager for the year. On February 7th, we reviewed legal matters with the township solicitor. On February 21st, prior to this meeting, we reviewed, reviewed with staff some personnel matters. I do want to mention one other thing, which I think is interesting. It may, Chris may have been going to mention it, but I'll steal his thunder if he was. So the township did receive in January the Crawl Bond Rating Agency's assessment of the debt rating for the township, and it continues to be a double A-plus status. And I just want to read the specific words that are in their assessment. KVRA continues to assess the township's management structure and policies as strong and effective. The township continues to leverage established conservative and comprehensive budget practices to achieve positive operating results. The financial position of the township remains strong. I think that's worth noting. So those are the announcements from myself. Next is township manager's announcements.
Mr. Chairman, I only have three brief announcements this evening. The first is that our monthly newsletter will be going out this Friday. The second is there's going to be a rededication and ceremony of the gazebo in West Goshen Community Park, and that is going to be held by the Friends of West Goshen Parks on March 31st at 6:00 PM. The gazebo was replaced last year, I believe, so this is going to be the rededication for Mr. for Jay Arnold there.
What, what date is it, Chris?
March 31st at 6:00 PM in Community Park.
Yep.
As it gets closer to the date, I will send around a reminder from Mr. Pratt from Park Recreation Director, Ken Lear. And finally, also related to our parks, the recent meeting of the Park Recreation Board, they discussed doing a tour with the board supervisors, Park Recreation Board, and the Friends of West Goshen Parks sometime in May. They're looking at Thursday evening in May. It's been a while since we've done a tour between the board and the members, members of the Parks and Recreation Board of the Township Park System, so that'll be, look for an invitation to that sometime in the same, you call for a May, or for a May tour.
Should that be all the parks?
True. I've been on, I took a, I got a private tour with Mr. Lear last, friend this time last year, so it's barely extensive and impressive.
Was it the bus trip? We did it come there as well.
I think the last, I think the last time this was done was pre-COVID, was definitely pre-COVID.
It was.
So it'll be, it'll be in the evening on a, on a Thursday.
Maybe we had sandwiches or dinner at Greystone Park.
And we will do that again.
Well, it'd be good because we'll have our grant application in by then.
And we may, we may now, they turned those around pretty quickly. And I just want, I want to say Jamie's been doing a great job putting her grant applications together. She's been doing human's work on putting them together. She's finishing up. our, she's finishing up our park improvement grant right now to the county. And I'm sure she's gonna write a great application for the EP. She's been doing a great job on those applications.
Well done, Jamie. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Next up is township engineers' announcements. Brian?
I have a couple brief announcements tonight. One was already handled earlier with the proposals for the PRP plan, as it had worked. We did meet and discuss with township solicitor about the Stormwater Study, the Corridinial study. That's still in process with HIV and we're working at through with the Army Corps of Engineers. And the update for Woodlands and Greystone, is there currently still building houses? I'm working with the solicitor on some questions to come up about some of the divens, and the part of the divens in the plan. And the dams are coming along. They're working on the stone facing right now. So, I anticipate the dams to be complete by the end of this year. So, that would be one, one large step closer towards dedication of the open space.
Any questions for Brian? Chris, we've talked about the management of the parks. It was one of the things, one of the progressions.
Yes.
Different options that might be available.
Absolutely. And we actually did just get the, finally, last week, we got the final version of the study from Natural Land. So, we have the final document in possession.
Is that the, that's the, the serpentine area?
It's the stewardship plan that the township, that the Township Commission for Natural Land, I believe it does include some information regarding the serpentine barriers.
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Brian. Next up is agenda item number 15, zoning offices announcements. Jamie?
General, I don't have anything to announce. We will have our next meeting on Monday, February 27th. So, 1100 Ashbridge Road, I believe there, and 809 Java Drive, which you see both of those applications. You've taken it yourself on stance. The, although put back, I think.
I believe they'll be rendering the decisions for a couple of applications, I think, as well.
That's, that's on next week, right?
That is, on Monday.
Thank you, Jamie. Agenda item number 16 is approval of the board supervisor's meeting minutes of January the 17th and February the 7th, 2023. Does the board have any corrections or adjustments to the?
I just have the board, page eight.
Which, which meeting?
Page eight, it's January 17th.
Yep.
I mean, it's the, what is it? Just the fifth paragraph, Dan. Just a clarification there. If someone announced participation on January 7th, that Community Book Discussion, it should read, participation on January 17th, 2023, Community Group Discussion at the Melton Center on Equity hosted by the former WCASD Director of Equity and Assessment. So, if you want, I can send that an email to you.
That'd be great.
Yeah, okay. You know, because it says it was held by the West Goshen School District. It wasn't. It wasn't officially an event for them. It was by someone who was associated with the best. So, I'll send it to you.
Any other corrections? Okay, well, with that correction, I will make a motion to approve the board supervisor's meeting minutes of January the 17th and February the 7th, 2023. Is there a second? Thank you, Ashley. Any other comments from the board? Any public comments on the motion or question? Okay, we're ready to take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any opposition? Motion passes four zero. Last on the agenda is number 17, which is approval of the Treasuries Report dated January 31st, 2023, for the General Fund, the Sewer Revenue Fund, the Wasting Recycling Fund, and the Capital Reserve Fund, and the bills to be paid for these funds. Are there any board questions or comments on the, on the Treasuries Report, all the bills to be paid? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Treasuries Report, the bills to be paid. Is there a second?
A second.
And any public comment on the motion? Very good. We'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes four zero. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor of general, say aye. Aye. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.